Bible transfer. Rather have him get in the cars on the road.
Too far, I don't want my kid goes too far.
Oh, it's a great school though.
Not as good as Bowling Green.
Both good schools.
Ava, Ohio. I applied to law school there. All right, are you ready to call the roll for the work session?
Oh, did you even have 4:30 already marked?
Yeah.
Calling the roll for the work session, Ms. Simon?
Oh, I think she left, she'll be back.
She said I'm here.
Oh, okay, she's here?
Mr. Greenspan?
Here.
Mr. Miller? Mr. Brady?
Present.
Mr. Germana?
Here.
Mr. Gallagher?
Here.
Mr. Schron?
Here.
Ms. Conwell?
Here.
Mr. Jones?
Here.
Ms. Conley?
Here.
Mr. Rogers?
Here.
A quorum is present.
All right, we've had a call to order the roll call. Discussions regarding February 22nd meeting agenda. Is there any discussions regarding the agenda? There are a couple of corrections that the clerk was going to make. Do we need to discuss any of those or kind of minor?
The one that I was going to point out was the, and I apologize to Councilman Rogers. He is the Chair of the Environment and Sustainability Committee and not Ms. Simon.
And where is that?
That is on page number three under item 11A. And I believe when we get there, then Councilman Miller will be making a motion to amend the minutes, but.
All right, so we only need to discuss that now. All right, anything else on the agenda for today? Can we move on to a presentation regarding private activity bonds for which the county serves as a conduit issuer?
About this trick earlier today, so I'm going to put your money to the computer. Thank you for the invitation to speak today. We are going to talk a little bit about how the county plays a role in conduit financing. Private activity bonds are bonds that are a creature of the IRS. It allows the state to issue private activity bonds based on the population of the state. The county and a couple of other entities play a role in, as a conduit, to issue these bonds that have a demonstrated public benefit. The Department of Human Services has some, the Department of Development issues some for multifamily housing units or development activity. For the most part, the county benefits two ways. One, by exerting its role in economic development and say that we are a conduit in helping these programs or projects occur. But then, second, we get some financial benefit by taking about 25 basis points of the bonds that are issued. Working with Joe Nani from counsel and Joyce Dodrell from the prosecutor's office, we've invited Bob Laimis, who can come and speak most knowledgeably on these topics and answer your detailed questions. The reason why this will be beneficial to all of us is because we expect that we'll have a number of these requests for conduit financing to come to counsel. And we want to be able to speed your ability to review them and authorize whether or not we should proceed. So with that, I'll ask Bob to join us. Bob?
Counsel members.
You can lower that and sit if you like.
Whatever you prefer. Do you prefer me to sit or stand?
It's up to you. Wherever's more comfortable for you.
Standing will work for now. As Mr. Kelly mentioned, the tax exempt bonds is really what we are talking about. And sometimes when I talk to folks about tax exempt bonds, I give more information than people need, but I find it's helpful because it puts us all on a level playing field of understanding. Simply put, when the county issues tax exempt bonds, whether they are bonds for county government buildings and county government purposes, or the so-called private activity bonds, the benefit and the reason why they exist is that if bonds are issued and I'm a bondholder, I purchase the tax exempt bonds, it means that the interest that I earn on the bonds, the interest that the county pays to me as a bondholder, is tax exempt to me. And I'll give a simple example. If I were to go out, or if a mutual fund or an insurance company were to buy a million dollars' worth of county bonds, if the interest rate on those bonds was 7% and the mutual fund or insurance company had to pay income taxes on that, if it was a million dollar bond issued, they would get $70,000 in interest paid to them in a year. But they'd have to then give about $25,000 of that to the federal government as income tax because the interest is taxed. If the interest on the bonds is tax exempt and the interest rate was four and a half percent, they get $45,000 of interest at the end of the year. So after taxes, a taxable bond at 7% and a tax exempt bond at four and a half percent are about the same thing to the bondholder. The bondholder is indifferent. If you're the county, however, and you're paying the interest, having to pay $45,000 saves the county $25,000 on that million dollars of bonds. So the benefit to tax exempt bonds is that the party who's obligated to pay the interest on the bonds will end up paying less interest, will end up owing less money over a period of time. That is why tax exempt bonds are beneficial to the parties who are able to use the bond proceeds. And as was mentioned, there are really two types of bonds. One are the so-called governmental use bonds, when the county issues bonds for a new county administration building, or a school district issues bonds for a new school building, or a city issues bonds for a new police station. Congress, in the Internal Revenue Code, determined that there are certain types of private activities, activities that benefit private parties, that are of a sufficient public benefit, that those private parties should be able to also have tax exempt bonds issued. And as was mentioned, among the most common that you as county council members will see are bonds that are issued for nonprofit corporations. Nonprofit corporations would include large nonprofit healthcare institutions like the Cleveland Clinic and university hospitals. And over the years, the county has issued many bonds for the benefit of university hospitals and the Cleveland Clinic. The county has also issued bonds for smaller nonprofits, whether it be nonprofit K through 12 schools, or nonprofit organizations like the Cystic Fibrosis Foundation, who built the new headquarters building several years ago on Chester at about 100, 98, 100, somewhere around there. Tax exempt bonds were issued because Congress has decided this is a benefit we want to give to nonprofits. And as was mentioned, those go through the Department of Health and Human Services, and Sabrina is here, also here to answer specific questions, if you have any, about healthcare bonds, is Jean Colleen, who's a, does the same thing I do. I'm with Squire, Sanders, and Dempsey. And no, I don't know what that letter says. I haven't read it. Jean is from Tucker Ellis &amp; West and has worked on numerous issues for the benefit of university hospitals over the year, and is particularly an expert in healthcare bonds. Other types of bonds that can be issued are what are called small-issue IDBs for smaller manufacturing companies. One of the entities that some of you may know of, Great Lakes Brewing Company. They've expanded their facilities on a couple of occasions over the years. Wonderful business that we're all proud of to have in Cleveland. They had tax exempt bonds issued because the Internal Revenue Code, because Congress decided they want to be able to promote and support small businesses. So what we're really talking about are these private activity bonds. And you might say, well, why is the county involved in private activity bonds? The reason is, is because, again, Congress determined, in the Internal Revenue Code, federal statute, that in order for a bond to be a tax exempt bond, the bonds need to be issued by a governmental body, a political subdivision. So to satisfy federal tax law requirement, if we wanted to issue bonds for the benefit of university hospitals or Great Lakes Brewing Company, another form of bond that I should mention, and it's the type of bond issue I work on most frequently, are for rental housing projects for low and moderate income individuals and families. Probably the most visibly significant example I can think of is, if any of you have driven down woodland or community college just east of where Tri-C is, and there's a very nice newish-looking residential development called Arbor Park Village that's just east of Tri-C, just before you get to Outway and King Kennedy. That was a project that was financed by, in part, from tax exempt bonds issued by Cuyahoga County as multifamily housing bonds to benefit low and moderate income families. The county has been the issuer of many of those types of bonds over the years. And what the Internal Revenue Code says is that in order for the interest to be tax exempt, in order for university hospitals, Great Lakes Brewing Company, the owners of Arbor Park, to benefit from the lower interest rates, the bonds need to be issued by a political subdivision. And there are several options that we in the bond community have for a bond issue for a project located in Cuyahoga County. Among the issuers are the county, the city in which a project is located could be the issuer of the bonds, the state of Ohio could be the issuer of the bonds, and the Port Authority can be the issuer of certain types of bonds. Historically, many of us have, and my role in these transactions varies depending upon who hires me. Also, I should mention Ray Haddon from the Brick and Eckler Law Firm is here. Ray and I have worked on a number of these bond issues together, and we've, Ray and Jean and I have worked on deals together, and we often serve in different roles. But one of the important roles that I play, and Ray has played, and Jean has played on these transactions, is to serve as bond counsel. Our job as bond counsel is to render an opinion that the interest on the bonds is tax exempt, and that the bonds are legal binding obligations of the county. Historically, when I have served as bond counsel and someone has come to me and said, who should be the issuer of my multifamily housing bonds, or my small-issue IDB, or my healthcare bonds? I've said, here are your choices of issuers, here are your, here are the benefits and detriments to each. And on many, many, many occasions over the years, folks have looked at the benefit, costs and benefits, pros and cons of who the different issuers would be, and they've chosen the county. Because whether it be through the Department of Health and Human Services, or the Department of Development, the county has an outstanding staff to work with. The county has been very amenable to assisting in these projects. And as was mentioned, there is a benefit to the county in that the county collects an issuer fee that's paid at the time the transaction closes. And the issuer fee depends on the size of the deal, of the transaction. It's, what is it? I don't remember exactly. It's 25 basis points on the first $15 million, and then 10 basis points for any additional amount. To give you a sense of what that means, it means if the county issued a $10 million bond issue for the benefit of one of these parties, the county would collect a fee of $25,000. That essentially is compensating the county for the time that your administrative staff has spent reviewing these transactions. And historically, what has happened with the conduit bond issues is, if it has been a healthcare issue, there's an application form that the Department of Health and Human Services at the county has. The applicant would fill out the application. Sabrina and her predecessors would review the application, make sure that the applicant complies with all of the county's requirements, and all the requirements that exist under state law for the county to issue the bonds. If the project has been a housing project, it would go to the Department of Development, and Sarah Parks Jackson would review the application to make sure that the application complies with the county's requirements and state law. If it's a small-issue IDB, the state statute requires that the project get the approval of something called the Community Improvement Corporation, the Cuyahoga County CIC, which is an extra step that the state statute has for projects like the Great Lakes Brewing Company project that I mentioned. And again, so at each step of the way, there's somebody to vet the project before it gets to a legislative vote. So under the old form of county government, before it got to the county commissioners, there would be an application, there would be a review of the application. One of the things that the county also historically has required for all projects other than the healthcare projects, and this is particularly important for the manufacturing or the housing projects, was a letter from the host community that they were in support of the project. So, for example, when Arbor Park was done, when the first phase of Arbor Park was done, mayor, the mayor was Mayor White at the time, and Mayor White submitted a letter to the county saying he supported that project. So that before the commissioners voted, they knew that the local community was in support of this. Last year, the county issued bonds for the benefit of university school, which they're entitled to do because university school's a nonprofit. And we got a letter from the mayor of Honey Valley, where the school's located, saying he didn't have any issues or concerns with the county issuing the bonds, and he supported the project. So you had the application, you had the review by staff, you had the letter from the host community saying we're supportive of the project. Another requirement that the county has in place, it's not required by federal tax law or state law, but that the county has in place, was an indemnity agreement to make sure that the borrower, and if the borrower was set up as a limited liability company or an entity that might not have a lot of assets behind it, some body with assets behind the project would agree to indemnify the county. Because something that I should have mentioned at the beginning, and failed to do so, is that these bonds, again, federal tax law requires that the county issue the bonds. But something that the borrower understands, the marketplace understands, the Internal Revenue Service understands, something that is commonly understood, is that the county has no responsibility for paying the principal and interest on the bonds. When the county issues bonds for its own projects, whether the Medical Mart, for example, where the county issued bonds last year, as we all know, the county's obligated to make sure that those bonds get repaid. And in the case of Medical Mart, we know those bonds will be repaid from non-tax revenues and from sales tax and so forth and so on. In these private activity bonds, we all, it is understood that the county's obligation to repay the bonds is just, essentially it has none, that it is able to transfer that obligation over to the borrower. So that when bonds are issued for the benefit of the Cleveland Clinic or Arbor Park Village Apartments, the people who are buying these bonds are buying them not on the county's creditworthiness, but on the creditworthiness of the party who's getting the money, who's benefiting, the nonprofit, the small manufacturer, the owner of the housing project. And so the county has no liability. That's why we sometimes refer to these bonds as conduit bonds, because this county is just serving as a conduit in order to get the tax exemption. So one of the things that the county makes sure historically that it's received is an indemnification and protection from the borrower, so that under no set of circumstances could the county ever be in a position where it has to come out of pocket. If somebody decides to sue because they don't like a project and they discover, oh, the county issued bonds for this new Cleveland Clinic building, I don't want this Cleveland Clinic building, I'm going to sue the county because they issued the bonds. Setting aside the merits of that lawsuit, the county is protected because it gets an indemnity from the borrower to make sure that the county will not come out of pocket. To make sure that that protection is there for the county, that really, that occurs through two ways. One is, as bond counsel, when we serve as bond counsel, whether it's myself, or Jean, or Ray, or other bond counsel lawyers who do this type of work, we make sure that the county is protected in the documents. In addition, historically, the county prosecutor's office, and in particular over the last several years, Joyce Dodrell, has reviewed the documents on behalf of the county to make sure that the protections and the indemnities that the county would want are in the documents. And so that's really sort of a quick overview of private activity bonds and the role that the county would play. As was mentioned, one of the reasons why we thought it might be helpful to come before the counsel and explain this is that there are a number of bond issues which those of us who actively work on these types of projects are aware of, that folks are interested in bringing to the county. And in fact, we have a, we have submitted for placement on the March 8th agenda, a resolution for one of these types of bond issues for a multifamily housing project. One of the great frustrations that I face when I work on these transactions as bond counsel, as you might imagine, is when folks who are putting together a project decide they want to have bonds issued, they want the money tomorrow. And so we frequently find ourselves with some external deadline being imposed on us. We need to close the transaction by X date, or if we don't close the transaction by Y date, this other funding source might pull their funding. So one of the things that we try, we really try to avoid when we work with the county or any other issuer, is putting the county or any other issuer in a position where you need to act more quickly than we would like your process, or you would like your process to unfold. But frequently, that will happen, where folks will say, yeah, we're ready to get going, we need a bond resolution adopted by next meeting, or two weeks from now, a month from now. So that's something that sometimes you'll face, and I didn't want to hide that fact because it is something that unfortunately, from my perspective, happens from time to time. With that, I'll take a breath, exhale, shut up, let any of you ask any questions. I don't know if my friends in the back row, if I missed anything, or put you to sleep. Okay.
Thank you, Madam Counsel President. I'm sorry, I didn't catch your name.
Bob Laimis is my name.
Bob, you mentioned a proposal for March 8th, multi-housing, a multi-housing development project?
Yes.
I believe. Could you tell us what that's all about?
Sure, I happen to know about it because I'm involved in it. It's for a project called the Doane Classroom Apartments. Doane Classroom, it's kind of an interesting story. It was a former Cleveland Municipal School District building that many years ago, I think really in the early 1980s, when the Cleveland Municipal School District was disposing of properties that it no longer needed, Doane School was one of the schools that the city sold to private developers.
I remember that. I believe there was some controversy around that.
Yes, for those of you who have a long memory, it was also with Beehive School, and they were sold to a group that involved, and there was some controversy. The project was subsequently developed by some folks who ran it successfully for a few years, for several years, but they then ran into trouble. And what has happened with Doane School is that the current owners have a HUD insured mortgage. They have, the project, they've been unable to keep up the project. And HUD is foreclosing on the project. They've sent out a foreclosure notice. And HUD has agreed to sell the project to a nonprofit, or to a partnership that is run by a nonprofit, Famikos Foundation. If any of you are familiar with Famikos, they do a lot of good work throughout the city, primarily on the east side, there on Ansel Road, on the east side of Cleveland. And Famikos is going to invest, $30,000, $40,000 a unit, do you remember the number? It's about $40,000 a unit to renovate the building so that it can continue to serve low-income seniors. And that is, I would say, a fairly typical multifamily housing project. Most of the multifamily housing projects that I've been involved with that have come through Cuyahoga County, the first one I did through the county was, I think in 1994. The vast majority that I've worked on over the past 12 to 15 years, what they've been is renovation, sometimes massive renovations, like the former, Arbor Park is the former Longwood Apartments. And if any of you remember what Longwood had become by the time that renovation took place, it's really a stark change. But Longwood Apartments that became Arbor Park, Rainbow Terrace, and there are several others, eight or 10 other projects that I can think of. What has happened is it's been a way to recapitalize these projects, to put $30,000 or $40,000 of repairs, sometimes even more, in the case of Arbor Park again, was a complete rebuild of improvements into these properties, so that they're, they don't get run down. But through the combination of funding sources that are available, they're able to do so and keep the rents affordable for their current tenant population. So that's, the benefit to the community is avoiding properties becoming what Longwood became, avoiding properties, these multifamily housing properties from becoming too, the conditions becoming too deteriorated. And with the benefit of tax exempt bonds and some other funding sources that are usually available for these, which we have in the case of Doane School, there's a, HUD is going to be making a grant to the project through a program called the 202 Program, which is a program that exists for nonprofit housing for the benefit of low-income senior citizens. There are some tax credits that will be involved in the project. Putting all that together, again, about $40,000 per unit of renovation, yet it will be able to remain an affordable housing project. And that's what we see as the public, for those of us who work in these types of projects, that's what we see as the public purpose for these multifamily housing bond issues. And as an aside, one of the other sources of funding for the Doane School project is through what's called the NSP Program, which is a neighborhood stabilization program. And in fact, the county last year... 1.5? So the county has already agreed to put in a million and a half dollars through what's called the NSP Program. And I can tell you, that's how a lot of these projects get done, is we cobble together a whole lot of sources.
Thank you, Madam Counsel President.
Mr. Schron, Mr. Rogers?
Yes, thanks for that explanation, Mr. Laimis. When you look at one of these projects, there's a lot of attorneys involved, and no deference being an attorney. So I was on the other side of that, seeing all the attorneys on one, on a project. Just so I have an understanding, where is the break-even point roughly on a project? How much, in the way of funds, have to be borrowed before it makes sense to go through conventional financing? Assuming you could get conventional financing versus going this route? Is there a number that, historically, you've talked to clients and said, if you're not borrowing over X, just to, because I know who picks up ultimately all the costs in regards?
There is, and that number has changed over time. One of the reasons why it has changed over time is that the spread between tax exempt interest rates and taxable interest rates has narrowed.
Right.
Which makes the benefit of tax exempt bonds, in some cases, relatively less attractive. Multifamily housing bonds are a little bit unique in that when the county or another issuer issues multifamily housing bonds, through other provisions of the Internal Revenue Code, it makes the projects automatically available for a tax credit, which generates equity. And so the additional equity benefit that comes along with the bonds is, makes multifamily housing bond issues somewhat different from the small-issue IDBs, or the healthcare bonds, or bonds for a Case Western Reserve University, or the art museum, or something like that. I, in the past several years, have set a project somewhere in the $3 to $5 million range, is probably, if it's below $3 to $5 million, I would think that folks would want to look long and hard as the weather.
The reason why I wanted to follow up on that line was, that's the kind of level to which we should expect to see the small-issue IDBs are going to be coming to this council, as opposed to something in the million or $2 million range, more than likely, for the manufacturing, or even the Great Lakes project, I assume, has to be falling in those kind of numbers.
Yes, generally, that is generally the case, yes. Again, there are certain, in addition to satisfying federal tax law requirements, bond issues have to satisfy whatever state law requirements exist. There are some state law provisions that provide certain benefits to certain types of projects. For example, certain types of facilities, if they have bonds issued under the healthcare statute, that may be sufficient to provide a real property tax exemption to that project as well. So that might provide an additional basis, for example, for a... So that might provide an additional basis, for example, for certain types of projects to go forward. As I mentioned, with the housing projects, federal tax law also allows for this additional benefit of the tax credit, which generates the equity. But usually, these days, I think I'd be surprised if I saw a project that, a bond issue that was much below three million dollars.
Madam President, another follow-up. In regards to projects, and I'm not trying to get specific to the Great Lakes as much as, that was, I assume, some kind of a manufacturing?
Yes.
They manufacture beer, which, good, good subject.
I didn't, by the way, I did not work on that bond issue. I'm, I'm familiar with it, I don't know.
No, and I wasn't trying to get specific on that project, per se, as much as the determination as to what portion of the, of the bond gets used for manufacturing, which is the federal exemption, I assume, versus just the restaurant piece, which is probably not exempt from that. And when that determination of percentage, and whether or not it is applicable for manufacturing, is there any risk, now that I'm on this side, concerning the county, if that determination is incorrect, as to the percentage, or whether it is a legitimate manufacturing application for purposes of IRS?
The short answer is, there should not be. And the reason why I say there should not be, is that that determination, in the first instance, would really be the responsibility of bond counsel. That's one of the things that we spend a lot of time as bond counsel doing, is making sure that the transaction complies with the federal tax law requirements, and that the bond issue complies with state law requirements. So at the, when a bond issue closes, when the bonds are sold, we render an opinion to the county, and to other parties in the transaction, that says the bonds are legal valid binding obligations of the county, and that the interest is not included in gross income for federal tax purposes. So, in the first instance, that's the role of bond counsel. In addition, again, the borrower would, could, and should be in a position to indemnify the county. I can share with, with the county council that the IRS has, over the past five years, significantly increased its examination activities, its audit activities of these types of bonds. And substantially larger number of these types of tax-exempt bonds have come under, have been the subject of random IRS audits, much the same way that individual taxpayers can be subject to a random audit. Any one of us, our tax return could be audited, the IRS pulls them randomly. They do the same thing with tax-exempt bond issues, because we have to file a form with the IRS when the bond issue closes. It's called an information return, that says these tax-exempt bonds have been issued. And the IRS goes through and randomly pulls them out, and audits these transactions. I know that one of the private activity conduit bond issues that the county has issued over the past several years is, was the subject of, is still the subject of, a random IRS audit, and that is being addressed, taken care of, defended at no expense to the county. And that is the norm, and what should be the case.
And Madam President, one more follow-up. So, should not be any cost as far as the defense, is there any risk at all in, if it comes down incorrect? And a bond counsel, I know does all their work and due diligence and all of that, is there any risk to our behalf? And I know you suggested an indemnity, is that something that is mandatory in every one of these bond cases coming forward, that we're going to be required to vote on?
Couple, the, couple of ways to respond to that. The easy way to respond to that would be to say, "No, the county isn't going to be liable." And I truly believe that to be true. The reason why I think it's appropriate to give a slightly more complete answer, is that if the IRS ever determines that the interest on tax-exempt bonds is in fact not tax-exempt because of some problem, and that has happened from time to time, the party who's responsible for making the federal government hold is the bondholder, not the bond issuer, because they're the ones who got the benefit. I bought five thousand dollars' worth of City of X bonds, and it turns out those bonds are taxable. I got all this tax-free interest, and I got all this interest, I didn't pay income tax on it. The IRS is going to expect me, the holder, to pay the interest. Now, if I'm sufficiently aggrieved and angry that, "Why do I have to pay this money?", I may end up suing some folks. If I end up suing some folks, I'm going to sue the borrower, and the underwriter, and bond counsel, and whoever I can think of to sue, and I'm going to sue the issuer too, probably. Now again, the indemnities are in place, the county would be protected. And in my experience, it is almost, well, I cannot recall the situation that I'm aware of, where an issuer has had to come out of pocket as a result of an adverse determination of the tax-exempt status of a private activity bond. That's not to say it's never happened, I am not aware of it happening.
Mr. Rogers.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, sir, for your presentation. My, my knowledge on this stuff is pretty limited, so bear with me if my questions don't make sense, but how many private activity bonds would you say the county issues within a Like ten or a hundred?
Well, a couple...
Ten to twenty, I'm Joyce Scott from the prosecutor's office. I have my list from 2001, and it varies, but I think in a lean year, maybe five.
Is there any reason, is the reason why the number is small, is because only that, that amount of organizations come to the county to issue bonds? Or is it, is there another reason why the county would reject participating as an issuer for bonds?
I can't speak to what the county would do, I don't know if Joyce wants to. I can say that there have been some borrowers who historically had their bonds issued by the county, who more recently have chosen to go to other issuers to have their bonds issued. I don't know why they necessarily... At level, the Ohio Higher Education Facility Commission issues bonds for all of the nonprofit private colleges and universities in the state, the Case Western Reserves, and Kenyon Colleges, and John Carroll Universities. Not a state university, but a private nonprofit university, OHEFC, issues bonds for them. The Ohio Higher Education Facilities Commission has also been designated by the state as its agent for issuing healthcare bonds. And I am aware of the fact that in the past few years, both the Cleveland Clinic and university hospitals have had OHEFC issued bonds, rather than coming to the county. I was not personally involved in those transactions to know, or that decision, to know why the clinic or UH chose to go with OHEFC, rather than the county. I think one of the biggest reasons for the drop-off in the past few years is, again, going to Councilman Schran's question, the narrowing of interest rates between taxable and tax-exempt have meant that tax-exempt small-issue IDBs, relatively speaking, have not been as attractive in the past few years. We have reason to believe that's going to be changing again in 2011, as interest rates start to creep up. And also, the multifamily housing bond market, for a whole host of factors, was somewhat dormant in 2008, 2009, and the first part of 2010. Excuse me. But we have reason to believe also that that's going to pick up. I think, in fact, in talking to Sarah Parks Jackson, as she and I were talking the other day, I think between the two of us, we're aware of about half a dozen potential multifamily housing bond issues that would come through the county in the next four or five months.
Madam Chair, is it possible to oversaturate, oversaturate the bond market in a local economy?
Possible, yes, has it happened? I haven't seen it.
So is there any consideration that the county needs to have when issuing these bonds, on whether or not there are too many bonds floating, floating around out there?
My personal belief is no. I noticed also, I saw Dan Rohr, is Dan, yeah, Dan's still here. Dan is an investment banker. He's, he would probably be much better served to answer that kind of question than a bond lawyer. Again, one thing to keep in mind is that the universe of people who are looking at buying the, these private activity bonds that we are talking about, oftentimes is a different universe of buyer than the buyers who would be buying the bonds that you, the county, might be issuing for your own purposes. You know, there were bonds that were issued for the juvenile justice, were those bonds issued? Did juvenile justice happen? Okay, well, that one hasn't happened yet, but, you know, there have...
We have general obligation...
Yes.
Yes.
Right, right, general obligation county bonds.
Not county bonds.
Right, no, no, I'm talking about the counties. Generally speaking, the, the, I do not believe that the issuance of the conduit private activity bonds would in any way impact the bond market's receptivity to county governmental use bonds, if that was your question.
In part, thanks.
Counsel, I have a question. I'm sure you do a very able job as bond counsel, but my question is, how is bond counsel selected? There are a lot of smaller firms, minority firms, that are, you know, always interested in getting into this, this business, and I'm just questioning how, how are bond councils selected for the county?
Historically, on conduit bond issues, bond counsel has been selected or recommended by the borrower, and that, there are a couple of reasons for that. One is that they're responsible for paying all the fees and costs, so they feel if I'm paying the bill, I'd like to have a say on that. Another is, while there are smaller firms, as you mentioned, who do try and, from time to time, get involved in this, there are a relatively small number of us who have been doing this type of bond counsel work consistently, and for a long number of years, and have what's considered a national reputation. I believe, and I'll, I don't know if Joyce wants to speak on behalf of the prosecutor's office, I believe, there, well, let me back up and say, and something I meant to say earlier, there are certain circumstances where the county has decided, in addition to bond counsel, and in addition to the prosecutor's office reviewing the transaction on behalf of the county, that the county should have its own separate issuer's counsel, representing its interests. And there are two circumstances that I know of where that has been the case. One is that sometimes bond counsel will be asked to serve in more than one capacity in the transaction. Cuts down on the number of lawyers, might cut down on the fees, might make things more efficient. But the county prosecutor's office has long had a policy that if we don't, if we are not bond counsel's sole client in this, if bond counsel, or the law firm that's serving as bond counsel, also wants to represent somebody else, whether it's the underwriter of the bonds, who's selling the bonds, or some other party, that the county wants its own issuer counsel to protect its interests. And I believe there have been other circumstances where, based on the county's lack of familiarity with bond counsel, the county has said, "We want our own issuer counsel protecting our interests," in addition to the role you bond counsel are playing.
Yes, if I could just add, typically, bond counsel, even though they're paid by the borrower out of the proceeds of the bonds, are, do represent the county, they write the, their legal opinion is addressed to the county, we rely on their legal opinion in issuing the bonds. So, it's been our opinion in prosecutor's office, that when bond counsel's allegiances are split between the issuer and underwriter, or issuer and borrower, that we do hire, our office does select an issuer's counsel for, the borrower also pays that fee, and it's usually a very nominal amount, but we have them review the documents and make sure that they are all protective of the county, so that there's no issue of a conflict with the bond.
So I pointed out, because, I mean, there's a lot of up-and-coming law firms, it's certainly a field that they would like to get into, and if they never had an opportunity to get involved in it, I'm just concerned that, you know, there's some equitable way that this can be distributed across the whole county, minority lawyers, Hispanic lawyers, I mean, women lawyers, that, you know, we just don't have the same group always representing the county, that we kind of spread the business around. It's good for our community, everybody's community. All right, Mr. Greenspan?
Thank you, Madam Chair. The, in the past, who has signed off on these bonds on behalf of the county?
Most of the documents, there are other officers that sign certificates, clerk's office, the auditor's office signs certain certificates, but mostly the board of county commissioners, and sometimes the county administrator.
Has it been determined, Madam President, has been determined in the future who, under the new form of government, will be signing? Will counsel be required, will the counsel president, is it just the executive?
Charter contemplates that the executive signs the contracts, but the council has to authorize it, so I think that's probably the same, the way we would do it, recommend that it be done.
Okay.
Mr. Morales, did you want to chime in there?
No, I would agree with Ms. Dodger, that it would be the power of the county executive.
Thank you, Madam Chair. One, another question, you said that on the eighth, there's going to be an item brought before us, will that be for first reading and sent, and sent to committee, or is the expectation that will be that we will vote on it and pass it at that meeting?
Our desire is that the county council follow the process with which it is most comfortable. One of the reasons for our being here today was to give you a sense of the process, to talk about it, to determine whether this is the sort of matter that county council would be comfortable receiving a briefing at first session, and then taking it to a vote on first reading, or whether county council feels it should be referred to a committee, go through a two-vote, or even a three-vote process. Bond counsel, working with folks who want everything done yesterday, I'd be delighted if county council, as a matter of course, were to pass these on first reading, and have referral to committee, and a requirement of multiple readings be something that would be viewed as, as the exception, rather than the norm, but it's, of course, not my place to dictate your policy.
Because these items, as I understand, would require a resolution of counsel, which, by charter, is a three reading unless we suspend the rules. Are any of these items, is this item coming up on the eighth very time-sensitive, that it has to be passed on the eighth?
Charter that's on for the eighth does not need to be, that resolution does not need to be adopted on the eighth. Sarah and I, and others who work on these, started talking about this, and a couple, there are actually two or three proposed bonded, private activity bond issues that are imminent. And when we started talking about this, we, we thought again, that having an opportunity to have a session like this, to enable the executive branch and the legislative branch to work out a process that made sense for both, would be most helpful. And if I may add, one other procedural element that's involved in, in the bond issue process, which is that, again, federal tax law requires that for these private activity bonds that we've been talking about, that there be a public hearing held after reasonable notice has been given. This, this requirement came into being in 1982, so it's now been almost thirty years. And over the course of that time, reasonable notice has been taken to mean publication in a newspaper of general circulation, not less than fourteen days prior to the hearing. TEFFRA hearings, because that's the acronym for the legis, the federal legislation in 1982 that created the requirement. So you'll hear folks say, "We need to have a TEFFRA hearing." Historically, when, under the prior form of county government, we would hold the TEFFRA hearing immediately prior to the commissioner's consideration of the resolution. One of the reasons why that, we did it that way, is because there's a requirement for a TEFFRA hearing, and then something called an approval of an applicable elected representative. When the Port Authority issues bonds, Port Authority has no elected officials, so the applicable elected representative for the Port Authority happens to be the mayor of Cleveland. When we hold TEFFRA hearings for the port, for bond issues that go through the Port Authority, frequently, we don't do those at Port Authority board meetings. Frequently, we will do them at the facility where the project is located, or at the location of the project, and then provide a report to the mayor of the city of Cleveland, because he is the... he is the applicable elected representative. When the Ohio Housing Finance Agency issues multifamily housing bonds, the governor is the applicable elected representative. So we will hold the hearing at the project site, we'll publish a notice in the newspaper, hold the hearing there, and then the governor signs the applicable elected representative approval. In the case of the county, we have two potential applicable elected representatives. Because, again, what the federal law says is that either the elected county executive, the highest executive branch, is an applicable elected representative, or the county council as legislative body is the applicable elected representative. So one of the procedural pieces to work out is, when does it make sense to hold the public hearing? If there's no requirement that it be held before the county council, that may be something that the county council would want, so that if there was a member of the public who wanted to speak as to the bond issue, again, there are two ways that it could be done. The hearing could be held separate from the county council process, and the report given to the county executive who signs as the applicable elected representative, or the report be given to council. Or we can hold the hearing as part of council's consideration of the legislation.
Please, Madam President, so these resolutions that you'll, that will be coming on behalf, for these private activity bonds will go through the executive's office and then come through to us through the normal course of how we're establishing our procedures. If there are any items that you feel, and I hope it's not the case, that require more immediate attention than three readings, you know, please let, upon the submission to the executive, let his office be aware of that, so we're aware of it as well.
My understanding is that is how the process will happen. With the Don School project, I can say that things will get somewhat more complicated if the resolution were not adopted at the March 22nd.
What, if you don't mind, that was my last question until this point. What would the, what's the issue? Why would the third reading cause an issue going into April if not passed by March 22nd?
Twofold. One is that the Ohio Housing Fin, just as the county is putting in some NSP money, so too is the Ohio Housing Finance Agency, and they have been- I do have the legislative process completed by the time that the actual foreclosure and transfer of title happens from the current owner to HUD, to FOMICOS. But again, we're- Well, we will address that issue and work with the stakeholders to make sure that that doesn't cause insurmountable problems. I guess I would suggest that, you know, in my saying this, this is what I have been told by the folks at FOMICOS.
Okay, thank you.
That's frequent, again, that's frequently the case. The developer will say, you know, you've got to get this bond resolution adopted by such and such a date, or else we've got these problems. And then we bombard Jean, and say, Jean, we need all these signed by tomorrow. Can you run around and get everybody to sign?
Madam Chair, if I could just ask, Jean Colleen is also here. He's bond counsel from Tucker Ellis, who will be also shepherding something through on the next, in the next month, I believe, for University Hospital. So he might have a time-sensitive matter, I think, I'd like to give him the opportunity to-
Yeah, Mr. Schrein has a question on this.
Yeah, it's on that very issue, I assume. I, thank you, Madam President. Regards to the time-sensitive aspects, it sounds like both are potentially going to allude to in deference to our investment banker back there. Sometimes, I believe that time-sensitiveness is the speed to which potentially interest rates are going to start moving out there, and I see some heads nodding. It's not necessarily time-sensitive to the project, but if you're the borrower, which happens to be our employer, hopefully, of all these jobs in Kegel County, and we're going to try to save them money because to lower the interest rates, therein lies the time-sensitive aspects of it, to, even a month can be changing the interest rates theoretically, because the known is better than the unknown of what, four, six, or eight weeks down, down the road. So I just, I'll ask it now in the form of a question. Is that element also contribute to time-sensitiveness to get that, when we actually sell, or when the borrower actually sells those bonds out in the open market?
That is frequently the case, and, every investment banker will always tell you that they can't predict which way interest rates are going to go, so don't hold them to it. But if they had to predict, they'd bet they're going up.
Thank you.
All right, anything further? All right, thank you. Oh, Counselor?
One quick matter. As Joyce said, I'm Jean Colleen. I'm with Tucker Ellis in West. And as Bob said, I do a fair amount of healthcare work with various nonprofit healthcare organizations. And one of the things that comes before the county, in addition to new bond issues that Bob talked about, are amendments to documents that the county is already a party to for bonds that were issued in prior years. And one of the things that we will have on the agenda in the next month or so, that is working its way through Sabrina's office, Sabrina and I have been working on for a period, is a relatively small amendment to some documents that the county is a party to that relate to bonds that were issued by the county for university hospitals over the last ten or fifteen years. And one of the kinds of amendments that you'll see from time to time is an amendment that adjusts the lease and other documents to add property or remove property. In healthcare bonds, which is particular to the statute that allows for healthcare bonds to be issued in Ohio, the county takes a property interest in the property that's being financed. And so there's almost a lease-leaseback transaction between the obligor, in this case, university hospitals, and the county. And that lease-leaseback has real property associated with it. There's a description of the property that's covered by that lease transaction. And from time to time, things happen, particularly in University Circle, where we have to adjust that description of property in order to take something out or put something in to that description. We have one of those coming up in the next month or so. The hospital is transferring a very small piece of property on Cornell Road to a developer who is putting a hotel along, in conjunction with University Circle Inc. and some other parties. There's a hotel that's being built on Cornell Road across from the new cancer hospital and university hospitals. And so there's about a 200-foot wide, or a 200-foot-long piece of property that's about 40 feet wide, that needs to be released in order to have it be transferred for the hotel process. So one of the things that the council will see from time to time is amendments to existing documents. And in the next month or so, you'll see one from me with University Hospital. So I wanted to mention that, and Sabrina wanted to make sure that you were aware that those things come up from time to time as well.
All right, anything further? Thank you, Jim. That's very informative. Do we have any miscellaneous committee reports? Yes, Mr. Miller?
Madam Chair, there's going to be a meeting of the Finance Committee next Monday on the 28th, and we're going to hear from Rick Warner and others on Health and Human Services regarding aspects of Health and Human Services, particularly related to budget matters. And also, particularly for Mr. Ivory's benefit, the subject of a briefing on the state audit program came up, but the council president recommended, and I concur, that this would be better presented at a work session, so the full council can hear it. So if you would coordinate with the council president on a date for that. And, Madam President, the final thing is that there is an item on today's agenda, which is a general appropriation of everything that was approved in the budget for 2011. And I would appreciate if we could get some information from the administration on why that's being brought forward at this time and what the need for that is.
Is that item 69?
I believe so.
Do we have anybody here, or can we, will we have them here for the regular meeting? Mr. Rabino?
Good evening. Madam President, members of council, Matt Rabino, Office of Budget Management. And Councilman Miller, I can speak to the item. This is appropriation of the free balances and encumbrances that rolled from prior year into 2011. Those amounts have already rolled on the general ledger in the accounting system of the county to 2011. And these are things, as described in the item, that were either appropriated in prior years as part of a grant or a capital project. And would also include items that were encumbered as part of a contract that is still in force. So contracts for ongoing operational contracts and for projects and grants. These items are rolled when the General Accounting Division really turns on the general ledger of the, for 2011 from 2010. So we bring this item forward each year, just as acknowledgement and approval of the appropriation of those free balances. These are items that were approved in prior years. The annual operating budget was approved last year. This is separate from the annual operating budget.
Madam President?
Yes, Mr. Miller?
Madam President, to Mr. Rabino, I expect, as a result of state action, that we're going to face the need to take some corrective action later this year. And my question is whether there is anything that rolled over from these prior years that we would no longer need, or that it would be advisable that we not spend, so that we can provide some additional resources to deal with what's coming down the road.
Councilman Miller, that's a good question. There really is two areas of this free balance and encumbrance measure that rolls, rolled into 2011. The first and largest chunk are really projects and grants that are already in progress. The agencies that are responsible for overseeing those individual items monitor the project progression or the grant implementation progression. And once the work is complete, they'll, again, decertify and reduce appropriation. And this touches on the conversation we had at the last meeting. The other group would be encumbrances that are tied to operating budgets. As I mentioned at the last meeting, starting in January and moving through the first and second quarter, the Office of Budget Management undertakes a review of these mainly contract items that are in this number, and re-review things that look like they may be aged out, whether or not they exceed a year or 18 months, but really just looking, knowing the individual program budgets, what contracts and other items are encumbered within those operating budgets. We do an analysis, and then we recommend to the agencies, here, we found this subset of items that need your attention, and give us an idea if we can go ahead and decertify and close these things out. So we, this is an ongoing process we do in the Office of Budget Management each year. And again, identify as many things as possible, because if, they will accumulate, and contrary to belief, sometimes it isn't money that the agencies have saved and can spend once it's decertified. Our approach is to identify the things that have outrun their course, decertify, and then reduce appropriation, so they're not things that we're going to expend. We're not going to expend funds tied to these obligations that are no longer used. So that's really the critical area, is looking at the operating budgets. By and large, the things in the projects, so giving you an example, for the county's capital projects for infrastructure and buildings, the only active projects and encumbrances that are rolling right now are things tied to the last bond measure, or, I'm sorry, bond issuance in 2009. Most of those projects are active. As part of the house cleaning process, the end of last year, we went through and closed out all the older projects and encumbrances tied to prior bond issuances. So those are an example of things that we clean up on an ongoing basis. The larger chunk then, especially if you look at the road and bridge projects, any of the other projects tied to sewer, and projects over in sanitary engineer, and then projects or other programs in the grant area, again, are ongoing and they are multi-year. So we do this need to roll this free balance or encumbered dollars over from year to year as a matter of process.
Thank you. No further questions? I thought other, other committee reports?
Yes.
All right, just, nothing from Mr. Rabino, thank you. Just an update on the Ethics Rules Committee. A voted out committee today was the council rules, which will be on the agenda for the eighth for second reading. The expectation is, on the eighth, we'll also have the ethics ordinance out of committee. We will plan on voting that out next Tuesday. On the agenda today will be first reading for public records, which we need to adopt public records policy by March 22nd. So that'll be coming swiftly out of the committee. Next week, I plan on introducing, and which will be on the agenda for the eighth, will be the first reading of the Inspector General ordinance, so we can start the process of having the Inspector General move through, so that when the rules, when the ethics ordinance is passed, the investigative component of the IG will be in place shortly thereafter. That's kind of what we're doing, just to give an update and be on the lookout for those pieces of legislation.
All right, anything further?
Madam Chair.
Oh, Mr. Gallagher?
This Thursday, there'll be a joint session of the Safety Committee and the Health and Human Services. Purposes for that will be the medical services for the county jail. We're going to be still taking testimony and trying to possibly solve a problem that we see coming down the pike there. Also, out of the Safety Committee last week, the Safety Committee voted two to one to remove the crosswalk in R2011-0051. Since then, we have come to an agreement with the city of Cleveland. Ms. Tuwen will be bringing that back to council. I'm not sure, Mr. Law Director, how that's going to happen. I believe she's going to have a talk with you. So I would imagine at the next meeting, that the city of Cleveland has agreed to split the cost of that project, and we'll go forward with that. But I'll have more for you when I get that information also. That's all we have.
I don't know if this is miscellaneous business or miscellaneous committee reports. I did receive today from the county executive the names of three persons recommended for the Human Resource Commission, and I gave them to staff, and you'll be giving them in your email probably tomorrow, first thing. But we do have to set confirmation hearings for them, and we also, pursuant to Section 9.01, we have to set a per diem compensation for persons for this Human Resource Commission. So I suspect that's going to go to Ms. Conwell's overworked committee. And I assume also that we would accept recommendations from the county executive as to some starting point. And there were also several other, two other appointments, and like I said, I don't recall them, but we'll be forwarding those to you. You should probably have them in your email this evening or first thing in the morning. Mr. Ivory?
Madam President, also have, on the same lines, what's going to introduce tonight, the appointment of Mr. Rick Warner as the Director of Health and Human Services. So I have that official appointment letter from the county executive, as well as his accompanying documentation.
All right, and then you get that to us tomorrow morning, and we'll start the process, and we'll set up another, we've been setting confirmation hearings for Thursday. So we'll do that tomorrow. We also, I would point out that there are a number of sections in the charter that create positions but don't create departments, one of which is the Law Department. And so we will be, I've talked to Mr. Morales about that. We'll be working on some legislation to create the Law Department and the divisions within that, probably adopt at the same time as the appointment of the Law Director. And just to add to what Mr. Miller said, I had an opportunity to meet with the state auditors regarding this internal law. It was a very interesting, interesting process, and I think it would be beneficial for all of council to hear how they go about that. And I thought it was a state audit, we pay our taxes, that they were going to, you know, do this for free. We don't do it for free. We've got to pay the state for it, but we're required to do it. So it's going to be interesting for all of us. Any other miscellaneous committee reports or miscellaneous business, Mr. Schrein?
Though it's not a formal committee report from the Economic Development Committee, there was a panel that was created as a function within the charter for identification within the County Economic Development Commission, and that person was selected by that panel last week, and the individual's name is- And the individual's name is Brian E. Hall, that will be going forward. He will not be able to attend the commission meeting, but the name was selected by that panel last week.
All right, Ms. Simon?
Thank you, Madam President. We're having Justice Affairs Committee meeting Friday, this Friday at 11 o'clock, to review the history and future of the Juvenile Justice Center.
Madam Chair.
Mr. German.
Now, this morning, we had a intergovernmental committee meeting. We had Ed Jurst that gave us overview of his first month under the job as the Regional Director of Regionalism and Collaboration. And so that was, that was very interesting. As a, a second point, he was a participant in that NOCA, Northeast Ohio City Council's Association meeting last week. And that'll be coming out as a podcast. But in addition to Mr. Jurst, there was Mayor Patton from Fairview Park that talked about the West Shore Council of Governments and some of the advances that they were able to do in projects through that. And then we had State Senator Nina Turner talk about some of the legal problems of not having state law allowing municipalities to collaborate in, in certain functions. So that, that's coming forward, and as soon as that's available, I'll email all members of council so they could review that. It was a very, very interesting, and I thank Mr. Jurst for being there last Thursday and then again this morning. Thank you.
Also, we, I talked about this internal audit. We, there is a position pursuant to Sector 1103, the Director of Internal Auditing, that it actually is a council appointee. There is an internal audit committee in which the president, council executive, county executive, and the fiscal officer sit on. And we have to, at some point, get that committee up and running when we get a fiscal officer, and then we will be appointing the internal auditor, based on recommendations from the, from that committee. We've got lots of confirmations. Yeah?
Madam President, if I may, I think it would be helpful to the council as a whole to hear what the committee heard today from Ed, Ed Jurst, if he'd be willing to come to one of our work sessions and perhaps talk about what his, what he's doing and what his role is in our new government.
The clerk and I have been kind of jacking those around, so we're going to be working on a schedule to get those people in, because I know I had an opportunity to meet with Lee from the county library. I thought it was very informative. I'd like for her to come in and give an explanation, and if council persons have other recommendations. So we'll arrange to do those in the work sessions in the coming weeks. All right, any other miscellaneous business?
Madam President, we do have a Public Works Committee meeting tomorrow. Obviously, we will review what, what we look at this evening, as far as the ordinance for creation of a Board of Controls and for establishing of the procedures for contracting and, and for purchasing. So again, that will be Wednesday at 2:00.
Any public comment for the work session? Has anybody signed in?
Madam President, no one has signed in for public comment.
All right, is there no further business before the work session? We will adjourn?
Madam President, I believe there was going to be a, a short presentation regarding --
All right, is there someone from the loan executive program? We, we've been here since 10:00 this morning, some of us.
Madam President, President to members of the council, my name's Jennifer Schofield. I am on the county executive's office team, and I am the county stat coordinator. And as part of that responsibility, I've also been charged with coordinating the loaned executive program. Thank you for the opportunity to provide you a brief update, and I will be brief in respect of your schedule this evening. I'm, I've provided a packet of information for you that contains just a few, a few items that can update you quickly on where we're at with the program. The first is the original press release from December 16th that announced the program. The second item is a press release that was released on February 7th that provided an update and the list of the first individuals who had signed on to the program. Next would be the article from Crane's Cleveland Business that, that mentioned, that caught that press release. And then the last two pieces are the names, affiliations, and interests of interested individuals as of yesterday, as well as a copy of some of the existing opportunities that remain on the list. So that's the packet, the process. There really is a method to the match at this time. Essentially, we receive an inquiry. People can either apply through the online portal off the executive's webpage, or we receive generally word of mouth or referrals. And that seems to be the most effective way to get people into the system and get them talking with leadership at the county, in the county departments. To that note, Madam President, to Councilman Greenspan, I'd like to thank you for a referral you made of Don Zwilling. I don't know if you recall that email chain, but he has been successfully plugged into a match. Will be helping with some of the regional collaboration work. So I wanted to thank you for that. A couple of ways that we can, can work through this process. First, as you might recall, there's an external advisory committee that works with us on this program. It's chaired by Nick York at Tucker Ellis and West. There are a number of other business leaders that are involved on that committee, including Paul Clark at PNC, Pudge Henkel at, from the clinic, and others such as Kylie Smith at YOAS Bank, who are active in, in making referrals to us. So that committee is, is working, working well. We've met twice in the month of January, and we continue to update our list and share information as best we can. The next step then would be for me to reach out to these individuals, either by phone or email. I really kind of ask a little more probing questions to find out what their real specific interests are, what their availability is, because this is a very fluid program. We really try to match interests with the time that people have available to them. And then I ask for their resume or CV so that I can have more information that I can share internally. And I, I mentioned that it's fluid, because a number of the people that we have are either still currently working and want to give a few hours a week to a certain project. Others are recently retired or will be retiring soon, and they want to continue to stay active and give back to the community and see this public-private partnership through the loaned executive program as an opportunity to do that. So once I gather all that information, I send it out to the internal staff and see if there's a match. So it really is a matchmaking process, if you will. Once we, we find a match, then I invite them in for a meeting. They talk together, they find out some opportunities, they set some schedules and some projects, and they're on their way. And then I step aside and continue to move to the next possible match. So that's the loaned executive program, very briefly for you. I'm happy to take any questions or comments. If you'd like to make referrals, please do. My contact information is at the bottom of the top page of your packet.
Do we incur any cost at all for this program?
Madam President, no, except for some of my time, which is, is already accounted for. And I, I might also add, this really is a nice match between what I'm doing with county stat, which is trying to improve performance with bringing in executives who can help us do that.
All right, any questions, comments? Thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, anything further before we adjourn? We need to call the roll to adjourn? All right.
Move to adjourn.
All right, sec, move this second?
Second.
All right, we'll take about 10 minutes, and we'll be back in session for our regular meeting. We take a roll?
I need a voice for it.
What?
Norma. Hi.
Hi. All right.
Hi.